Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Michael.
How we doing?
Good.
Good.
Everyone can hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Yes. Good evening, Gerard.
You look like you got a haircut there, Gerard.
Uh, I need one, actually.
Oh, really? Okay, maybe it just is well, uh, well-quicked this evening.
Yeah.
I, I had scheduled my first haircut in more than two years, and then my stylist got COVID, so I'm delayed.
Oh, wow.
So it's delayed until Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah, I went about two years with the long hair like you did. I cut it off about seven, eight months ago, so.
I always keep my hair long, but not as long as it is, so, yeah. Let's see, one, two, three, four. Do we have any expected absences this evening?
No.
Okay, so we're short Marco, Mary Ann, and Kelly?
Kelly?
Yeah, okay.
There was no, at least I didn't have a calendar invite, so I don't know if that's...
I could start texting people.
Michael, I have a question before we begin on the, um...
Sure.
In Inez, I checked the conflict of interest map, and I'm pretty sure I'm clear, but before we begin, would you mind taking a look at that real quick to make sure that...
I took a look at it, um, I think when we had ARC, I looked at all the members, so I, I was, yeah, I'm sure you're out of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Kelly informs me, and I actually had noticed this, that the, um, the link in the packet document is not clickable, and I had to download the separate agenda directly from the website to get a clickable link. I mean, you can just type it out.
Yeah, I actually had to go to zoom.com and just type in the meeting number to get in, so, but the link didn't work for me.
That happened as well. Yeah, yeah, I was... I wonder if Mary Lou is having the same issue? Yeah. Madeline's gonna be sending, um, calendar invites to, to Kelly and Mary Lou, so I apologize for, we apologize for that. We'll make sure that you get the calendar invite next time, and we'll figure out what's going on with the agenda why it's not, wasn't clickable.
The calendar invite normally has a link, right? That you can just go right to the meeting?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
It's always easier than opening a PDF with the link in it, just put it right in the calendar.
Difficult technicalities. There we go. Mary Lou has not responded. I did attempt to ping her on texts, and I think it went through, but she didn't, uh, reply back. I guess we'll give her another minute.
Sorry about that, guys. I'm not text savvy.
You ain't the only one.
I've gotten in the habit of downloading both the agenda and the packet anyways, so that I can keep the agenda open to refer to when I'm flowing through, because I'm, I'm paging down in the packet during the meeting to the, the diagrams and whatnot, and the, uh, the agenda today had the clickable link, but the packet did not. All right, well, we'd certainly have a quorum.
Yes. Yes, I think it, I think it would be fine to start, uh...
Yeah.
Mary Lou has a con, she has a conflict on the first item anyway.
Oh, that's right, so it's really, really not gonna matter, all right. All righty, everyone. Uh, thank you to everyone for attending the planning commission meeting this evening. The planning commission will continue to hold meetings remotely via Zoom until such time that it's determined that it's safe to meet in person. Um, please know that we want to hear from you. If you are in the audience and you would like to address the commission during public comment for an item on the agenda, please use the raise your hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. When it is your turn to speak, planning staff will call your name. They will unmute you, and you will be given three minutes to address the commission. If you are joining us by telephone, you may also address the commission during public comment by pressing star nine, and staff will address you and unmute you. You will also be given three minutes to address the commission. Please note, anyone in attendance may only speak once per agenda item. Uh, Madeline, could we have a roll call?
Yes.
Ah, Kelly informs me, and I actually had noticed this, that the, um, the link in the packet document is not clickable. And I had to download the separate agenda directly from website to get a clickable link. I mean, you can just type it out.
Yeah, I actually had to go to zoom.com and just type in the meeting number. But the link didn't work for me.
That happened as well.
Yeah, yeah, I was. I wonder if Mary Lou is having the same issue. Yeah. Madeline's gonna be sending, um, calendar invites to, to Kelly and Mary Lou. So, I apologize for, we apologize for that. We'll make sure that you get the calendar invite next time. And we'll figure out what's going on with the agenda why it's not, wasn't clickable.
The calendar invite normally has a link, right, that you can just go right to the meeting?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
It's always easier than opening a PDF with the link in it. Right in the calendar.
Difficult technicalities. There we go. Mary Lou has not responded. I did attempt to ping her on text, and I think it went through, but she didn't, uh, reply back. I guess we'll give her another minute.
Sorry about that, guys. I'm not tech savvy.
You ain't the only one.
I've gotten in the habit of downloading both the agenda and the packet anyways, so that I can keep the agenda open to refer to when I'm flinging through, because I'm paging down in the packet during the meeting to the diagrams and whatnot. And the, uh, the agenda today had the clickable link, but the packet did not. All right, well, we'd certainly have a quorum.
Yes. Yes, I think it, I think it would be fine to start, uh,
Yeah.
Mary Lou has a con, she has a conflict on the first item anyway.
That's right, so it's really, really not gonna matter. All right. Alrighty, everyone. Uh, thank you to everyone for attending the planning commission meeting this evening. The planning commission will continue to hold meetings remotely via Zoom until such time that it's determined that it's safe to meet in person. Please know that we want to hear from you. If you are in the audience and you would like to address the commission during public comment for an item on the agenda, please use the raise your hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. When it is your turn to speak, planning staff will call your name. They will unmute you, and you will be given three minutes to address the commission. If you are joining us by telephone, you may also address the commission during public comment by pressing star nine, and staff will address you and unmute you. You will also be given three minutes to address the commission. Please note, anyone in attendance may only speak once per agenda item. Madeline, could we have a roll call?
Yes. Chair Harmon?
Present.
Vice Chair Madden?
Here.
Commissioner D'Arzo?
Here.
Commissioner Bisotti?
Here.
Commissioner Lethan?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson? Six zero, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner D'Arzo, would you care to lead us in the pledge this evening?
Stand up to make it official. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right. So, item four, uh, approval of minutes. Does anyone have a motion or any comments, concerns on the minutes?
Uh, since I wasn't here last time, I assume I just don't vote, correct?
Yeah, you can abstain, that's fine.
I move to approve the minutes?
Pardon?
I move to approve the minutes?
I'll second this.
Roll call, please.
Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madden? It's staying. Commissioner Bisotti?
Aye.
Commissioner D'Arzo?
Same.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Lethan?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Five zero minutes pass.
Sorry, was that a five zero or was that a four zero? Because I thought, did Marco also abstain? Because he had been absent. But I think it's a four,
Four zero.
A four zero one one.
Correct. Thank you, Chair. My math is off tonight.
There's a reason my Twitter bio says that I am a semi-professional pedant. All right, at this time, we would welcome, uh, public comment for items not on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission this evening on an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Do we have any hands?
There are no hands raised in the audience.
Right. Uh, announcements of conflict of interest. I believe we are expecting a conflict of interest from Commissioner Johnson, but she is not present in any case. And Commissioner Bisotti, I think, did we, did we resolve your question?
Yeah, I believe we did. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Moving right along. Uh, let's open our public hearing on two thirty-four Santa Inez Avenue. Uh, staff presentation, please. Brandon?
Good evening, everyone. Um, you'll have to forgive me, I'm a little, uh, under the weather. Give me just a moment to get this going. Can everyone see this okay? Good, all right. Hello, everyone. Um, our first item on the agenda is for a use permit, an architectural review permit at two three four Santa Inez Avenue. This is, as mentioned, a use permit, architectural review permit, um, for, the use permit is to allow a residential addition exceeding fifty percent, addition of existing floor area, while the architectural review permit is to increase the overall floor area by more than a thousand square feet. The location of this project is on, uh, Santa Inez Avenue between San Anselmo and San Antonio avenues, across the street from Happy Hill School. This is what's, uh, considered the Loeta Park Number Two subdivision. And the lot that this project, uh, is focused on is thirty-eight hundred and eight square feet. So we'll begin, uh, by evaluating the existing conditions, uh, at this project site. The, um, the home that is currently at two thirty-four Santa Inez Avenue is currently an eight hundred and seventy-five square foot home with an FAR point two one. The home has currently, uh, one bedroom and one bathroom, along with a one-car garage, uh, kitchen, living room. It was built about nineteen fifty-two. It should be noted, the houses on this block, uh, were built in a wide range from the, uh, about nineteen ten all the way to nineteen seventy-nine. So there are a variety of architectural styles, sizes, uh, and features on this block. So moving on to the proposed project at the site. Proposed project would see a new second story added to the home, along with a major interior remodel, uh, and exterior remodel as well. Uh, there would be a total increase of one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight square feet, which would bring the home to a total size of two thousand one hundred and thirteen square feet with an FAR point five. Uh, this is still below the, um, the required or the allowed FAR at the site. Uh, there would be three bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms, along with an open kitchen, uh, an open concept kitchen, dining room, and living room area, while the one-car garage would remain, uh, with a second, uh, space in the driveway. So, uh, the question is, of course, why does this require a use permit? Um, while it does not exceed, uh, allowable, uh, floor area or lot coverage, uh, parameters, uh, it does increase the home by a hundred and forty-one percent, which of course is significantly above the fifty percent threshold to acquire a use permit. Uh, this slide shows the proposed flight site plan, along with, um, some of the proposed landscaping in the front and rear yard. Uh, the garage is proposed to be recessed to allow, uh, the accommodation of the, the correct size of, uh, parking space in the driveway. Uh, and, um, as previously mentioned at the Architecture Review Committee, there was a, an item of public comment received from the home in the rear, uh, with concerns for, uh, drainage from the, uh, back into a neighboring home, which will, uh, be addressed, uh, during the building permit phase. And, um, the architect and homeowner have promised would be addressed through, um, uh, the correct means. The, this shows the existing floor plan on the left. As you can see, it is, um, there are just, uh, three bedrooms, or three rooms in the garage, uh, in the current home. On the right, it shows a diagram of how the lower floor would be expanded, um, to correct the diagonal wall in the rear, uh, as well as expand, uh, a staircase, uh, to the left, uh, side of the home. This shows the proposed floor plan. Uh, on the left, you'll see the, uh, lower floor, uh, which does, uh, accommodate a new expanded, uh, kitchen, dining, and family room in an open concept pattern, uh, preserving the one-car garage, uh, as well as a, a separate living room and powder room and mudroom. On the right, you will see the proposed second floor, which would accommodate three bedrooms and two, uh, bathrooms. The elevations on this slide do show the proposed front and left elevation in comparison to their existing, um, elevations. Uh, you'll see that there have been facade articulations, uh, as well as, uh, uh, materials that are, um, equipped with the San Bruno Residential Design Guidelines. It should be noted that, in this case, the daylight plane requirement is met from front to back, as, um, it would, um, as is said, and would not be possible on small lots of this size for second story. This shows the proposed rear and right elevations in comparison to the existing home. Um, there's also some facade articulations provided on the rear, as well as varied, uh, design, as well as varied materials used in the design that comply with the San Bruno Residential Design Guidelines. And finally, uh, this, uh, slide does show material samples which are provided by the architect. Uh, on the left is a, was, uh, provided by the architect as an inspiration for the home, uh, with that, the design elements. And on the right, they have provided the color schemes, uh, that would be used in the exterior materials of the home. And this does conclude the presentation for, um, two thirty-four Santa Inez Avenue.
Thank you, Brandon. Um, really quickly, I, I did read over the, the letter from, um, I forgot, it was Ms. Smith, I think. Um, and the, there had been a request for the, uh, sort of, have the concerns acknowledged in writing. It appeared to me, though, that our condition of approval twelve already specifically, I mean, essentially does put it in writing, that it requires the project to include bringing the property up to modern code in regard to stormwater management. And, um, Form One had, uh, it appeared acknowledged, uh, there was a, a page included in the packet, uh, where Form One was acknowledging the stormwater practices, so hopefully, uh, that satisfies our, um, yeah, it was Patricia Smith. It doesn't look like she's in attendance this evening. Um, that said, are there any other, uh, points of conversation from the commission? I see a hand from Commissioner Morgan.
Yes, uh, as on the Architectural Review Committee, and I did raise, uh, an objection to the metal roofing on the projections on the ground floor, uh, area. Because the metal is not consistent with, uh, roofs in the area. I don't know of any other metal roofs. I have nothing against metal roofs as such, but I think comp shingles would be much more, uh, compatible. And I think the architect at the time of the ARC, uh, agreed that it was, there was no problem to change those to, uh, gum shingles.
Um, do we have the architect in attendance, and do we want to do a quick presentation from them on the return to commission?
The applicant is in the audience.
Should we promote them for a quick?
Yes.
Short comment?
Hello, Tim, you're on mute.
Good evening, Commission. Um, yes, um, to, uh, answer, uh, Mr. Valentin's, um, question, we did, uh, submit an updated with the asphalt roof. I think maybe the slides were from the original, uh, from the original, uh, planning review. Um, so we definitely took that and, and, and did that. It saves them some money as well, so. Um, I don't really have anything more to add. We will, we are getting a civil engineer to do a full drainage plan. Uh, Precision out of Belmont will be doing it. So, um, definitely, you know, want to correct water issues, so, um, there's no issue there, so. Um, if you have any questions, I'll be here. Otherwise, you know, hopefully, we look forward to, uh, planning approval. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Are there any other, uh, questions or concerns from the commission? If not, uh, we can move on to if there's any, uh, questions from the public.
I don't see any hands raised here.
All right. In that case, would anyone like to move to close our public hearing?
I make the motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Ben.
Roll call, please.
Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Bisotti?
Aye.
Commissioner D'Arzo?
Aye.
Commissioner Lethan?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson? Six zero one, motion passes.
All right, um, do we need any further conversation with staff, or do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, use permit twenty-two dash zero zero one and the architect's, uh, permission twenty-two zero zero two, uh, with the twenty-two conditions.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Bisotti?
Aye.
Commissioner D'Arzo?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Lethan?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Six zero one, motion passes.
Thank you, Madeline. All right, very efficient. Uh, that was our only public hearing. I believe we have a resolution to discuss on our five-year capital improvement program. Uh, staff presentation, please.
Right, um, good evening, Chair and members of the commission. I'll do a screen share here. Okay, this evening, um, uh, we're requesting that the planning commission adopt a resolution, uh, con- confirming conformance with San Bruno General Plan for our capital improvement program that will be included in the city council budget that they're considering, uh, this month, and will be adopted by the end of June. So, uh, I'll be just going over, uh, background on the, the general plan consistency requirement, uh, a brief discussion of the, uh, the projects and their, uh, general plan, uh, policies that support them. I'll conclude with a res- a recommendation and questions, and, uh, we'll just keep moving forward here. So by way of background, um, Government Code Section six five four oh one, uh, requires that, uh, before any public projects are approved, uh, that they be found to be consistent with the general plan. And this is a, a pretty practical, uh, requirement, uh, because the purpose is to make sure that the proposed physical improvements are in alignment with the goals and policies of the general plan, uh, so that, you know, there, because the general plan is a document which, you know, expresses the community's agreement on, uh, improvements and, and, uh, you know, a, a vision for the future. For discussion, um, these projects are, uh, are, uh, mostly public works, uh, projects. So, uh, the first one is a well-water testing system upgrade, uh, and the Sweeney Ridge tank chlorine generator installation. Uh, the, um, the testing system upgrades are just to, uh, replace, um, older, uh, testing equipment with new testing equipment that's all, uh, monitored by computer, uh, for better accuracy and to assure, uh, water quality. Um, the second one is, uh, Sweeney Ridge tank chlorine generator installation. Um, and this is, uh, a, a new chlorine generator that would, um, again, precisely and, um, uh, you know, add chlorine to, uh, the system. So there are, there are two general plan policies which support that, support this, which are to ensure that the city's water supply are adequate to serve, uh, the city's present and anticipated needs. Um, and then also, uh, it's really the second one that's, uh, the most important, is to monitor and regulate, uh, well-water quality and production levels to prevent contamination and overreact, and coordinate with the SFPUC to develop a conjunctive use program for the West Side groundwater base. And that second part really doesn't apply, so, uh, these, you know, these policies are, are, you know, just generally, in, in, in a, in general, support, uh, water quality. Uh, for wastewater, uh, there is one project, and this is a, an improvement, um, at Earl Avenue, Glenview Avenue. Uh, it's a sewer main replacement. This is a low-lying area where a lot of the, uh, you know, a lot of the, the water drains to this area. Um, so it's the low point, and so, um, this, the sewer main, uh, because of capacity, uh, issues has overflowed, uh, overflowed, which is, um, you know, creates a water quality issue. Um, and so, uh, and so the, the improvements would, uh, you know, basically resolve th- those issues by increasing the capacity of the sewer lines. So the, the policies that support that are, uh, you know, again, ensuring that the city's wastewater, uh, collection and treatment system is adequate to serve the city's present and anticipated needs are safe and environmentally sound, so it's really, um, uh, making this improvement to make it more environmentally sound. Um, and then to re- upgrade and replace sewer lines to accommodate anticipated flows and prevent overflow. So this one, this one is a direct hit on the situation, and, um, you know, applies, uh, specifically to the situation. Uh, next is a city's facilities project. This is a city hall maintenance. Uh, so this would be roofing, HVAC, exterior and interior painting. Um, it's a five-year, uh, program that would start with, uh, uh, setting aside funds for it. Would include a roof replacement, um, HVAC replacement, um, and HVAC building management system. And then finally, exterior and interior paint and restoration, flooring and carpet repairs. So, um, the one policy that supports this is to develop a civic center complex master plan in order to coordinate rehabilitation and expands, expansion of the various city departments and, and service providers. Uh, so this doesn't, uh, include expansion, but it's consistent with this policy just because the building is, uh, in need of some, some upgrades, since it hasn't been, uh, you know, nothing's, you know, substantially been done to it in the last twenty years. So, the next is a street rehabilitation project, and this is just, uh, various sidewalk repair and replacement uh, projects that are just kind of ongoing throughout the city as, um, you know, funds allow. And then there, uh, these projects are carried out, um, off of a priority list. Um, I don't have, um, specific projects, uh, to mention, but, um, it, uh, of course, this is consistent with the general plan, and there's, um, you know, three, uh, uh, you know, three policies that support this. You know, again, trying to improve, uh, non-vehicular, uh, transportation. So you can see it right at the right, this is actually at the corner of Earl and Glenview, the same intersection we were just talking about. So just making improvements for ADA and accessibility and improving sidewalks where needed. Um, next is to develop a safe, convenient, and continuous network of sidewalks and pedestrian paths within the city. And then finally, implement a street lighting and sidewalk maintenance program for residential neighborhoods throughout the city. And then, um, underground utilities where feasible. So, um, you know, so again, that, uh, that applies to, uh, the funds that will be used, uh, through the capital improvement program for sidewalk repair. So finally, the recommendation is that staff is recommending adoption of a resolution confirming uh, review of the two twenty-two through twenty-two seventy, five-year capital improvement program and fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three capital improvement program budget, and its conformance with the San Bruno General Plan pursuant to California Government Code six five four zero one. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, are there any questions from the commission? I am not seeing any hands so far. I have a couple myself, if nobody else is interested. Um, One, having, you know, I reviewed the list, and I mean, these seem obviously like important projects generally. I mean, the wire quality and so on, I'll know that there are concerns with flooding. We have a history. I know there was, I think, even predating my own appointment to the commission, there had been a plan put in motion to do a whole bunch of water and wastewater pipe replacements under the streets of the whole east side. And I was unclear whether that project has been completed or if it's still proceeding in stages, but I did not see that project in here. Whether, is it just that it's that budget is already fully allocated, and so we're not seeing it as this part of this capital budget?
Yeah, I believe that's, that's the case. So David Wong from our Public Works Department is, is here, and hopefully he can respond to that question for us. Hi, David.
Hey, good evening, Mrs. of the Funding Commission. So you are correct, there is still a greater plan, and we are proceeding in stages to be able to date the sewer water main kind of east of El Camino real.
Okay, and that, that plan, we are, we are comfortable that it is funded and moving along a pace, you know, modulo any disruptions we've had in the last couple of years from the pandemic?
Yes, that's correct. There have been some delays, the pipes are shorter than this and stuff.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, I just, I was like, I didn't see it in here at all. I was like, did it go away? The other, the one other thing that I was sort of just concerned with in terms of consistently, consistency, perhaps not with the general plan, but with the transit corridors plan, which at least should inform, you know, how we interpret the existing general plan and how we plan to rewrite it in the next couple of years. The transit corridors plan would seem to anticipate that El Camino is going to be rebuilt of, you know, of three-to-five-story buildings. And I wonder whether we really want to be investing too much resources into a one-story, fairly elderly building. I mean, you clearly don't want to let the roof cave in or whatever, but it seems like there would be some merit to doing the bare minimum to keep that operating until there's an opportunity to look at, you know, relocating city operations and rebuilding that building entirely with, you know, a multi-story, multi-use building. And so I have concerns about how much capable should be invested in a one-story building on El Camino at this point. And I would argue that that is not consistent, at least with TCP's vision of that corridor. I don't know if anyone else has thoughts for it, if you would like to respond. Commissioner Leffin.
The thought crossed my mind as well. It sounds to me as, well, I was wondering the same thing myself. How much do we want to put into a building that has kind of an unknown future and an area that has, you know, densifying development happening? My, I guess what I'd be curious to know from staff is, this seems like kind of the bare minimum to keep it going, you know, in absence of a greater plan for that building and for the safety and well-being of the people who were inside of it. But I'd be curious to know what staff would have to say.
Yes, yeah, and that, that is correct. I think there have, there have been discussions about, you know, larger plans, you know, maybe if the, if the library were to move, and then, you know, the building, and the buildings or the civic complex were expanded. But I think it, you know, again, it comes down to funds. You know, funds have been set aside, and, and obviously, new civic centers are not inexpensive. So, you know, so I think with the improvements that, you know, even if planning and fundraising started for, you know, new civic center and other improvements, I think, you know, that we, we would get good use out of them. And I, as, as a person that works in the building, specifically the HVAC is, it would be a priority for a lot of folks.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mean to make your life uncomfortable, Michael, but, you know, like, I absolutely, like, ideally, I'd like to see all of you working in a much nicer, new situation. But is there, are there any ongoing conversations to look for a developer that would be interested in, you know, I mean, like, because then that's clearly an incredibly valuable parcel, right? If somebody wants to develop a mixed-use building there, potentially, you could design it with the office with the idea that we disperse the, you know, disperse the workforce temporarily and then return to essentially the same location, just with, you know, one floor of a multi-story building or something like that.
Sure, sure.
So, I mean, and the question, I don't, is there, have we, you know, put out a request for proposals or talked to anyone? Like, it seems like, you know, we could start trying to do that. But in any case, yeah, no, as long as, as long as we are being frugal with this and not, you know, as I said, it seems like committing capital to a building that we might want to see completely demolished and rebuilt in, I mean, even, you know, five to ten years. It's like, if you build a new roof, like, a new roof is a twenty- or thirty-year asset. So it is a little, you know, but as long as we have assurances that that's, that we are looking to that time horizon, I think it's fine, and I'm comfortable voting for it.
Great.
Commissioner Madden.
Yeah, question for staff. It's more about, I may need to recuse myself from this vote. The company I own has a, was recently awarded as-needed contract at the city for structural engineering. It didn't look like anything on this list would be needing that. Can, do you guys have any plans for the necessity for that type of service? Because I don't want to vote yes or no if I could potentially be hired to work on it. The only thing I could possibly think of is if you wanted some kind of code evaluation for the city hall, that would be it, for like seismic or something, but I didn't see that.
I don't see that, that, that's a need. I, I guess I, since I, you know, yeah, I guess I, I don't see a direct conflict that would really prevent you from.
I would, I would just suggest that if we want to have sort of an abundance of caution, if you wanted to abstain, Vice Chair Madden, it seems very likely that we have enough votes that this is going to carry without much controversy.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, and we have enough for a quorum as well, so I'm probably going to abstain no matter what.
Any other comments, or do we have a motion?
Through the chair, I'm letting Mary Lou into the room.
Uh-huh. Welcome, Commissioner Thompson.
Welcome.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry, my internet has been down. So the wind is so horrific up here that it just, and then we'll probably cut out. It's been happening all day today.
We have just been discussing the capital improvement program. I don't know if you have any questions based on having reviewed the material, or we kind of, I think we're approaching the end of our conversation.
That's fine.
All right, do we have a motion?
Through, through the chair, I just wanted to make sure that.
Oh, do we need public comment on this topic?
Yeah, the only, the only.
It's not a public string, sorry.
Yeah, the only, the only person I see in the audience still is, is Tim, the architect. So just, just, I wanted to confirm.
Right, yes, yeah, no, I'm forgetting. Yep, do we, do we have any, yeah, I see David Wong, our, our Public Works, and I see Tim. Mr. Radwans, did you care to comment on this issue? I think probably not.
No hands.
All right, apologies. I'm, I need to get set up with multiple screens so I can keep my agenda and instructions and all organized better. All right. I think we are ready for a motion if anyone has one. If nobody has it, I may make it myself.
Motion to adopt the resolution?
Seconded.
Chair Harmon.
Aye.
Vice Chair Madden.
Abstain.
Commissioner Biassodi.
Aye.
Commissioner Dorazo.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Leffin.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye.
Five, zero, two, zero? Did I get it right, Chair?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Wonderful, all righty. That brings us to items from staff.
Really, no, no new updates from staff, unless you have any, any questions. I guess I will mention, we will be releasing the draft housing element, so it'll be on our website. We'll also send you an email to, when it's available sometime next week.
Very exciting. I, I want to compliment the staff on your work on this. I have been tracking the housing elements of a number of cities around the peninsula, and I would say that ours is of higher quality than, than many.
Good, well, we hope to, hope to, hope to, you know, get it, get it through. And the, the process is there will be a thirty-day review and comment period that'll extend till June twenty-fourth, and then we'll send it to HCD. They have ninety days to provide us comments back, and then it'll be back in the fall with an updated draft that addresses any comments that we receive, and also any comments we receive from HC before we go, you know, to the adoption hearings in the fall. So.
Do we need volunteers for the June sixteenth ARC, I believe?
Yes, yes. I'm not sure if we have any items, but we'll take the volunteers so we make sure we have, have books lined up for, for the items. So, yeah, so if we could get the volunteers, that would be great.
I can volunteer myself.
Okay, looks like we have Val and Arus and Marco. Okay, thank you.
Great. All righty, we reached our public comment. Second opportunity for public comment. I think we are all out of participants, so I doubt we have any additional comments.
There are no hands raised.
All righty, does anyone have any items from members or our non-agistant subcommittees?
Do you have an item, but it's, I just wanted to announce that I will not, leaving out of the Country Trust really on May twenty-fifth. I will not be returning until the end of June. So I will make every effort to be on, but it's, I, you know, I don't know how possible that will be, but I wanted just to let you know.
I believe we did confirm with the city attorney that as long as the order remains in effect, that we're doing remote meetings that can welcome your contributions.
Correct.
Received that notice, I was happy to hear that. But I will make every effort to try to join, and just the time difference, and you know, for me, it'll be like two-thirty morning.
Yeah.
Don't know where I'll be, so we're doing road trips, so, but I will make the effort, and I will, I will communicate with the staff to let them know.
Wonderful.
Have a good trip, Mary Lou.
Thank you, thank you.
And I was going to wish a get well soon, Brandon, but I think he logged off already, so hopefully he will be recovered soon.
Yes, and I, I also wanted to, yeah, make a comment before he left. Brandon is leaving us, so this was his last meeting, so I apologize, I didn't jump in after his, after his presentation to, to let you all know and, and wish him well. So, yeah, if you, maybe if you wanted to shoot him an email or something, that would be fine, but, yeah, so he'll be moving on. We are, we are in the process of hiring new, some new staff, so you will, you'll be seeing some new faces starting this summer.
I assume he has the standard city email, like a, an initial and?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll drop him a line. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. Very efficient, forty-six minutes. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two at seven PM. Thank you, everyone, for your contributions.
Yes, thank, thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.